Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Bob Landergain is absent, excused. Please rise, our Cub Scout Troop 124 will lead us in the pledge and ceremony.
Color Guard, forward march. September 11th, 2001, United States attacked by terrorists on an American soil. Many 3,000 people were survived Saturday, including 6,000 citizens and 7,000 civilians. Although most of these civilians, many were killed or strangled, those who risked their lives for safety and their lives. Today we remember and honor those who died on that terror. On the 60th anniversary of this tragic event, we ask that you keep in your prayers those who are no longer with us, especially the Madison residents who perished, six innocent victims who lost their lives on that tragic morning. Mr. James Crawford Jr., Mr. Timothy Hughes, Mr. Patrick McGuire, Mr. Donald Peterson, Mrs. Jane Peterson, and Mr. Peter West.
In placing this mourning ribbon on the flag, we pay tribute to our fellow Americans who lost their lives 15 years ago, as well as honor the brave men and women who continue to serve and protect our great nation today. Right-hand salute.
In honor of our fallen brothers and sisters, let us remember them in a shared moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Color Guard dismissed.
Please reiterate just for a few more moments. I just want to thank Cub Scout Pack 124 for leading us in this ceremony in recognition of 9/11. And I want to thank Scouts Thomas Daley and Troop 7 for waking up early this morning, going around town, lowering our flags to half-staff. Thomas had reached out to me more than a year ago about making sure he recognized his date properly and led a nice ceremony on Sunday last year. Obviously, school got in the way of having to do that again, but this is a day that will be with us forever. This was a day, much like today, that many of us woke up and said, what a beautiful day it was. I remember waking up and saying, whether a day does get any nicer than this. And it quickly changed. The world we knew changed on that day. The world that these Scouts were born into years later changed on that day. The efforts of our first responders will never be forgotten. Those that ran into the Twin Towers as others were running out, not questioning what would face them, but just knowing they had a job to do, and that was to save lives. We'll be recognizing our first responders, our men and women are uniform in a few moments. So, thank you, and please be seated. We're gonna do things a little out of order right now. I would like to ask our uniform officers, both fire and police, please come forward. I'll ask for a motion for Resolution 247, Resolution of Borough of Madison Authorizing Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Madison Policeman Benevolent Association Local Number 92. Motion for 248, Resolution of Borough of Madison Authorizing Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Firefighters Mutual Benevolent Association Local 74. And Resolution 249, Resolution Borough of Madison Authorizing Collective Bargaining Agreement with Madison Superior Officers Association Local 92.
Mayor, I move Resolution 247-2017, Resolution 248-2017, Resolution 249-2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 As we recognize this is a formality, as we have approved the contracts going into the coming years, but we wanted to make this point to do this today, to recognize your efforts on a daily basis. Every day you put your uniform on, you don't know what your day is about to begin, but you do it without thinking twice. And we appreciate that, and thank you for serving Madison so well, so proudly. Let me come down below and...
Hi, how are you? I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, and I think we can all agree, what we saw in our Scouts is Madison's finest of tomorrow, and our fire and police, our finest of today. May I have a motion for the regular minutes of August 14, 2017?
I move 'em.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I left my pen down there, too. You got two pens? Still my pen. Welcome. We had our usual end-of-August break, so a lot of catching up to do. And we had a great end of summer. It may be a little cooler than normal, but it's great to see everyone. I apologize for a slightly late start to our meeting. You can imagine, we skip one meeting, we have a little catch-up to do. Couple of things have been happening in between. On Saturday, August 26, incoming Drew freshmen had their tour of downtown Madison. It's sponsored by the DDC, with most of the tour guides coming from the DDC and other volunteers of the town, and it gives the students a great feel of the great town they just moved into and what their home will be for the next four years. At the end of the tour, they all got lunch, courtesy of the DDC and with the partnership of the restaurants in downtown. So, I think you'll see them around town, and make sure you welcome them. And also, I want to thank Drew University for the fireworks display this past Saturday. It was a great town and gown event on a beautiful night. And Labor Day normally is the unofficial end of summer and the official end of the Madison community pool season, but they pushed it to a new level this year by being open this past Saturday. So, I'm someone that refuses to accept that summer ends on Labor Day, so I was very happy to be jumping off the diving board and doing the slides and quickly grabbing the towels. I froze to death, but they had another great season in the Madison Pool. I want to thank all the volunteers there. The Employee of the Month for September is Joanne Grillo of the Health Department for assistance she provided to the new director of the Senior Center during the transition caused by the retirement of our longtime senior director while meeting her regular job responsibilities with the Board of Health. And I also want to make everyone aware of the hurricane relief effort that we have put together with partnerships with the police departments in the area, obviously including Madison. So, we have drop-off locations as we look, we know that the work in Texas is just beginning, and the work in Florida, they're just trying to figure out exactly what they need to do. And so, just as this nation often does, we step forward to help those in need, and Madison is always leading the way. So, we have a drop-off location right here at the Public Safety Building. Items that are needed: 20-gallon plastic bins, diapers, socks and underwear, new, it says, baby food, toilet paper, hygiene products, trash bags, air beds and sheets, cleaning supplies, hand sanitizers, soap and shampoo, paper towels, blankets, and bottled water. You can get this on RoseNet, I also want to double-check, but please step forward. The need is tremendous. And we have representatives from the Madison Area YMCA. Please come forward and present a proclamation. Welcome, Gwen. Proclamation of Madison Area YMCA, celebrating our Community Week, September 15 through 24, 2017. For those in the audience that are now doing your calendar math, yes, that is longer than a week. I guess the YUSA, trying to outdo the Beatles of eight days a week, has made this 10 full days. So, whereas the YMCA of the USA has partnered with Welcoming America to celebrate the growing movement inclusive communities across the United States, and whereas celebrating our Community Week celebrates members of the Madison Area YMCA and the community and their contributions to the social fabric of our country, and whereas the goal of celebrating our Community Week is to promote cross-cultural understanding, raise awareness of the benefits of welcoming everyone, and whereas with 42 million foreign-born individuals currently living in the United States more than at any point in our history, it is imperative to the well-being of our communities that all neighbors have the opportunities to engage, build mutual understanding, and work together to create a positive social progress for all. And whereas celebrating our Community Week highlights the visibility of the commitment of the Madison Area YMCA to engage underserved populations and contribute more connected and cohesive communities, and whereas this initiative creates a platform to engage members and to support the importance of diversity and inclusion at the YMCA and in our communities while enhancing partnerships and serving community organizations and businesses. Now, therefore, I, Robert H. Connolly, the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim September 15 through September 24 as celebrating our Community Week at the Madison Area YMCA. Thank you for accepting this.
Thank you very much.
Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start my report, I just want to make a comment. We just voted on three resolutions that took a tremendous, hard work of months and months to put together. So, I just want to acknowledge Ray Cody and Jim Burnett for all the hard work going into these particular contracts. We appreciate you. I might yell, but I appreciate you. So, anyway, Bob Vogel is here tonight, and he's gonna give a presentation about the Engineering Department. But in the meantime, what has happened is that we have completed mill and overlay for Nine Streets in the program totaling 3.6 miles and 7,800 tons of asphalt. Additional paving on King's Road will be considered this fall as the work progresses with sidewalks and lighting. Some signage and striping work still remains. Sepheli, you'll see them all over Madison. They've been working on the Seven Streets for the 2017 road reconstruction contract totaling 1.5 miles and 2,800 tons of asphalt. So, everything is going very well. You know, the incomplete work, punchless, has been taken care of. The Brightway Electric has completed the signal replacement work for the County of Morris on the Lewanica-Woodland intersection, and I guess that's finished, right, Bob? Is that finished completely now? Yeah?
They have the punch list, they care of trouble.
Good. Gen Electric completed upgrades to the four municipal traffic signals over the past month, which are very important. And Good Oak Public Service Gas is doing some replacement work on Main Street, east of Greenwood Avenue, and that's scheduled to start in October as well. The independent contractors anticipate starting the concrete work for the DPW canopy at the refueling area this month. There's a lot of sampling of wells of the remediation contract at the rear of Hartley-Dodgen that are scheduled to be installed by a well driller under the supervision of Mott McDonald this week. Nickerson Company completed the press box at the Madison Recreation Complex. Also, quotes were requested and received for a rebound wall proposed for the edge of the Western Field at the MRC. Take a ride up there, it looks really good. The state has issued the request letter for 2018 local aid grant applications with a submission deadline of October 6, 2017, and the Engineering Department will be working on that. From DPW, they continue to work on the baseball and softball fields to keep them better maintained. We have fall ball right now, and we are renting out to softball teams for their practices. So, they've been lining all the various fields for the various teams. They set up a new soccer goal at the MRC, and there's always general maintenance on all the parking lots, and they spread fall protection at the playgrounds. Mechanical services are always working. They're getting the leaf machines ready. They're also put into service two mason dumps, trucks, and installed their radios, and that work continues on the repair of the street sweeper as well. Sewers, they always monitor and check all the sewers and lift stations. There's repair to 14 catch basins, two sewer inspections for contractors, and they've been assisting with the North Street Station repairs and training. The Road Department is assisting with the Borough Roads. They're working on potholes and patchwork, and they're working with the Electric Department on a new building that will be at the DPW site. And they are assisting the police with their target range work as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank all the parties for successful negotiations of the contracts. From the Finance Department, all municipalities in New Jersey are required by statute to hold an annual tax sale of unpaid real estate taxes and utility bills, and the Borough will hold its tax sale tomorrow. By selling the tax sale certificate, the Borough receives the unpaid property tax or utility bill from a third party. This makes the Borough whole again and guarantees that there are no significant delinquencies on the books for many years. The third party does not own the property, but they do hold a lien against the property in the amount of the tax sale certificate plus interest. Typically, the property owner pays off the third party and gets the lien removed from the property. Last year, we're happy to report that the Borough had zero properties on tax sale. This year, we anticipate that there will be one property on tax sale. And we want to thank Hattie Evans and Chrissy Mailer of our Tax Department, Donna Carey, Magdalena Mortorana, and Frank Pacolo from the Utility Collections Department for doing such a great job with tax and utility collections. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Beginning with the reported from the Electric Department, the Electric Department's been quite busy in continued installation of poles and cables on King's Road and Division Avenue for the new housing development on that big corner. They've also installed a new transformer on Crestwood Drive. They've installed service to new traffic lights at Woodland Road and Lewanica Way. They've relocated temporary sheds at the Rosedale Skate Pond. They've completed the second year of line clearance. You may well have seen them around doing some clearing of those lines. They've done it in my neighborhood just recently. And they completed installation of new LED lighting in the James Park substation. The Water Department has had 102 requests for locating and marking underground utilities. They've had five curb boxes shut, which means there's homeowners having work done, inside work being done, and they've been installing radio transmitters for remote water meter reading and work orders from outside registers, meter replacements, and new construction meter installations. This is all part of the program we've spoken of before. And then, on a final note, the Madison Water Department would like to remind consumers that the voluntary water restrictions are still in effect. Addresses with odd numbers should use outside water on odd-numbered dates, and addresses with even numbers should use outside water on even-numbered dates, with no watering during daylight hours. That's to avoid the significant amount of water that's lost to heat and evaporation. All under-mated sprinkler systems must be set to minimize zone times to prevent water runoff from property and system. Should also have a working rain sensor so that watering does not continue on rainy days. Vegetable gardens and new plantings should be watered with handheld devices. We'd very much appreciate if all residents would comply with these restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, September 19, at its regular monthly meeting, the Board of Health will be discussing the introduction of an ordinance regarding invasive plants, which will include bamboo, and they will also be discussing an ordinance that will address the issue of feral cats. They've also set dates for the flu clinics for this fall. They are as follows. At the Madison Senior Housing Center at 15 Chateau Terry, they'll be doing it on Tuesday, October 10, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And at the Civic Center on 28 Walnut Street, they'll have one on Wednesday, October 25, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And again on Wednesday, November 1, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Next, the bottle-hill vendors, food vendors, rather, are encouraged to send in their applications for a temporary food license to the Health Department. And finally, the Health Department has scheduled its annual free rabies clinic. This will be held on Saturday, December 9, at the DPW Garage on John Street, and that will be between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. Additional information on all of the above should be on RoseNet. Thank you.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, and if you have a public safety for Mr. Landergain.
So, I'll start with the public safety. From the Police Department, in support of the families and Florida police officers, Chief Datchison and the Madison Governing Body sent Patrolman Ryan Dunn and Patrolman Travis Daniel to Kissimmee, Florida to attend the funerals for their fallen officers. Madison officers departed August 23 to attend the funerals of Sergeant Richard Howard and Officer Matthew Baxter, who were shot and killed in the line of duty. Madison officers have attended funerals in Dallas, Texas, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, Des Moines, Iowa, and now Florida to show support for our brothers and sisters. A special thanks to JetBlue Airlines, who flew the officers for free to the funerals. Chief Datchison has ordered his officers to wear black mourning bands on their badges for the next 30 days, and thanks the entire governing body for their support. On August 21, 2017, the Madison Police Department and the PBA Local 92 presented Madison, New Jersey Hero and United States Marine Corporal Todd Love with his new wheelchair. The wheelchair was purchased with money raised from the Rose City Roll Fundraising Event as well as the Drew University Prison Ball Tournament. We'd like to thank all those who donated toward the purchase of the wheelchair. As promised to Todd, all of the additional proceeds totaling $13,000 were donated in his name to the Tunnel to Towers Foundation. And there's a picture of Todd in his new wheelchair, and I'll see if we can't get that up on RoseNet. From the Fire Department, during the month of August, the Fire Department responded to 24 general alarms, 22 steel alarms, 31 investigations, and 46 EMS calls, for a total of 123 calls for assistance during the month. Two of the fire calls were mutual aid responses. On August 3, which was a hot and muggy Thursday evening, at approximately 11:00 p.m., the Madison Fire Department, along with many other fire departments and agencies, were dispatched to assist the East Hanover Fire Department at the scene of abandoned rail cars burning on the train tracks behind the FedEx facility located at 9 Melanie Road in East Hanover. Two older sleeper train cars were burning end to end. Firefighters had to hike into the woods to gain access to the burning train cars. Madison Fire Department was released and back in quarters by approximately 1:30 a.m. And then, on Saturday afternoon, at approximately 6:30, the Madison Fire Department, along with the Chatham, Green Village, and Summit Fire Departments, were dispatched to Chatham Township to assist the Chatham Township Fire Department at the scene of a residential structure fire at 497 Sun Pike Road. This was a basement fire. Madison was back in quarters by 7:45 p.m. On August 17, the RA Residential Advisory Staff from Drew University participated in hands-on fire extinguisher training, which was conducted by the Morris Candy Fire Academy and the Madison Fire Department. Each year, the RA staff receives classroom training from the Madison Fire Department regarding fire safety in dormitories and their roles in keeping the students safe during emergencies. And finally, the members of the Madison Fire Department, FMBA Local 74, provided food to the senior citizens at the Rexford-Tucker Apartments for an afternoon barbecue. The FMBA members cooked hot dogs and hamburgers and also provided watermelon for dessert. The event was well-received and was free to the seniors of 15 Chateau Terry. rail cars burning on the train tracks behind the FedEx facility located at 9 Melanie Road in East Hanover. Two older sleeper train cars were burning end to end. Firefighters had to hike into the woods to gain access to the burning train cars. Madison Fire Department was released and back in quarters by approximately 1:30 a.m. And then on Saturday afternoon, at approximately 6:30, the Madison Fire Department, along with the Chatham, Green Village, and Summit Fire Departments, were dispatched to Chatham Township to assist the Chatham Township Fire Department at the scene of a residential structure fire at 497 Sun Pike Road. This was a basement fire. Madison was back in quarters by 7:45 p.m. On August 17th, the RA Residential Advisory Staff from Drew University participated in hands-on fire extinguisher training, which was conducted by the Morris Candy Fire Academy and the Madison Fire Department. Each year, the RA staff receives classroom training from the Madison Fire Department regarding fire safety in dormitories and their roles in keeping the students safe during emergencies. And finally, the members of the Madison Fire Department, FMBA Local 74, provided food to the senior citizens at the Rexford Tucker Apartments for an afternoon barbecue. The FMBA members cooked hot dogs and hamburgers and also provided watermelon for dessert. The event was well received and was free to the seniors of 15 Chateau Terry. And then, oh, sorry, yeah, Community Affairs.
I'm on a roll.
I'm on a roll. Keep going. Okay. But just one thing this week, the Second Annual Storytellers Festival will take place at Madison's Culture Corner, which is Green Village and Main Street. Green Village Row will be closed down for the afternoon between 12:00 and 5:00. And there will be entertainment, musical entertainment, as well as storytelling. There are a number of people who have been featured on The Moth. Anybody who listens to NPR are coming to tell stories. There will be author signings. There will be activities for children. Supposed to be nice weather. Come on down and celebrate culture in Madison. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received an email dated August 20th from Michael Soriano of Woodland Road regarding the welcoming community resolution, an email dated August 21st from John Larkin of Elm Street regarding service on New Jersey Transit, an email dated August 30th from Ray Liati of Central Avenue regarding traffic calming measures on Central Avenue, and an email dated September 10th from Kathy Daly of West End Avenue regarding Ordinance 35, 2017.
Thank you. Now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is one that is limited to items on the agenda, and it's agenda discussion, so you may comment on the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, Engineering Department presentation, and current year 2017 best practices inventory, or you may comment on any of the resolutions. Any ordinances, we'll have a hearing, so we'll have comments at that point. And any other topics you want to comment, comment on will come up later in the meeting. If you want to take advantage of this time, please step forward, state your name, your address, the resolution, or the agenda item you're commenting on, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. But we're generous here. That will give you a bonus minute, a three-minute warning. You're not quite yet. Yep. Almost. We love anxious presenters. Anyone wish to comment based on those guidelines? Seeing none, we'll go to our first agenda item, which is the Mayor's Wellness Campaign. Dr. Jim Hollenbach, thank you. As he gets ready, the Wellness Campaign has been in place since Mayor Woody Kirkus Lager's time. And basically, we're about to hear how they're working very hard to keep us healthy and make, make us healthier.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here to briefly describe what's been going on with the Mayor's Wellness Campaign. For those of you that are not familiar with it, excuse me, in 2007, Madison became one of the first two towns in the state of New Jersey to establish a campaign and were granted, it's called a Healthy Town, New Jersey. Since then, in the last 10 years, there's only been 27 other towns that have, have reached this status. The campaign is a statewide community health initiative in partnership with the New Jersey State League of Municipalities. This is a program that gives mayors tools and strategies to champion healthy and active living and to improve the overall health of their communities. When mayors promote healthy living, they can drive community-wide change. As part of the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, towns should work to promote health in the following domains: youth, seniors, employees, and community. Our team here in Madison consists of our mayor, Bob Conley, numerous business owners, doctors and healthcare providers, local university employees, as well as a representative from our own Health Department. We're currently working on, working on a number of programs, just to mention a few. We've instituted a supermarket tour with the local, bigger box store supermarkets. Whole Foods has tours around the entire department. You can schedule them, go as a group or individual. At any time, they have someone on, on staff that does that, as well as stop and shop. And just recently, one of our neighbors in Chatham at ShopRite brought to our attention, and we went as a committee up to the ShopRite tour, which was very informative. And if you weren't aware, that ShopRite actually has a registered dietitian on staff at all their stores in New Jersey. And their dietitian gave us a tremendous amount of information. She gave us a full tour of the store, not only what a lot of supermarkets like to call, say that most people only perimeter shop. They start in the veggies, they work their way to the meats, and then they come swing back the dairy, and then they head to checkout. She took us around and showed us kind of some of the products that most people aren't looking for, possibly quinoa, or something like steel-cut oats as an oatmeal option. And it was very informative. And they, they offer sections where they have complete meals prepared, where if you need eggs, a certain vegetable, and a certain protein, it's there with a healthy recipe, and it breaks down the caloric intake and the portions, which are very important to show as well. Another initiative we're working on is the Healthy Restaurant Initiative. We're encouraging all Madison restaurants to create healthy menu options. And we're creating stickers that we're going to actually give them to stamp on their menu items, again, that follow those guidelines with less salt and fats and, and more protein-conscious and healthy vegetables as portions as well. We have Redux, Chef Lauren's, Rocco's, Nikki's Firehouse Pizza, and Bellotti, as well as many other restaurants that are participating. And lastly, our third program, which we're working on, is called the Madison Fitness Crawl. If you've looked around town lately, obviously, there's been an increase in fitness facilities in town. You can't go 20 feet without finding one. With me, I have one of our newer business owners, Claudia Arts of Chase Fitness, and she's going to explain to you how the program's going to work.
Good evening. I'm Claudia Arts Schreiber from Chase Fitness Madison, one of the newer fitness studios in town. As part of the committee, we're starting to organize the Fitness Crawl, kind of modeled like a pub crawl, but healthier. The different studios that are involved are obviously Chase Fitness, Bar Method, Club Flatties, Max Challenge, Mind Your Body, Studio Yoga, and Jolene. The Fitness Crawl will take place on Sunday, November 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with a final stop at 1:15 p.m. It will require some pre-registration, but will be free for participants, or you can register on the day of. Each studio will offer 15 to 20-minute sample classes so that the community can get to know the different methods and different studios available in town. There's literally something for everyone. And as a way to promote healthy living and an active lifestyle, we will offer punch cards so participants can get stamped or punched at each of the studios. And Whole Foods has generously sponsored the day of the event, some snacks, as well as some discounts for participants post-event. And I think some of the studios participating will also offer discounts for those who participated. So we hope that it will be successful and look forward to it. Thank you.
Just to close, we, we're still a group that's growing, and we're looking towards the community people, if anyone's interested in joining us in our mission. We'd like to thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time. And we wish, and we appreciate all your continued support with this, this campaign. And we wish all the Madisonians continued health and well-being. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for? Well, thank you for your effort to make Madison healthier. And Claudia, I will let my sister, your former teacher, know that you've, you've done her proud in presenting. Our next item is our Engineering Department update. Bob Wolken.
So rare it comes up on the screen exactly when you want it to, so happy about that. So thanks again for the time. The Engineering Department is in charge of many of the capital construction projects for the borough. And at Carmella's request, we put a quick rundown of the work in 2017 to date. And it's been a very busy summer, for those of you that were around in August. I'm sure you could see that there wasn't many roads you could drive on without running into a construction project somewhere around town. So we've had a very good, had a very good year so far, and it will continue to be a good year. There's a couple of big projects left. But as far as it goes at present, we have in 2017, as Carmella mentioned, nine mill and overlay projects, 3.6 miles complete, seven road reconstruction projects, 1.7 miles complete, total of 5.3 miles. It's over 10,000 tons of asphalt, which is actually a pretty big year for us. One of the reasons that that happens is we had very good prices on the mill and overlay program this year, so we could afford to actually do a little bit more work, which was nice. The traffic safety issues included five signal improvements, including the county's project at Lewanica and Woodland. So just running through the mill and overlay program, Prospect Place, Fairwood Road, Redmond Drive, Oxford Lane, West End Ave, Maple Ave, Dean Street, Britton Street, and Kings Road, all complete. The general capital appropriations for the mill and overlay program not only include the, not only include the road resurfacing, but it also includes things like purchasing manhole covers for replacement, the castings, the striping, a lot of third-party services preparing for the mill and overlay work to actually be completed. Stavola was our contractor for the summer. Again, very reputable contractor, do a lot of highway work. We were lucky to have them, particularly at the prices that they had given us in the county co-op contract. Here's a couple of photographs of completed work, one at Kings Road, another at Britton Street. Typically, the mill and overlay program is fairly straightforward, just in terms of milling procedure, which takes a day, and repaving, and manhole resetting, which takes a day or two for each street. So overall, with 10,000 tons, I think we had about 25 straight days of milling and paving work this summer. The road reconstruction program, these are projects that we bid and do the plans and specs in-house. We bid them in-house, and we get a general construction contractor this year. Seffeli &amp; Sons, again, was the low bidder on our construction contract. Good reputable contractor, again, do a lot of good concrete work for us. So the summer reconstruction program included Howell Street, Locust, Park Lane, Lathrop, Gibbons Place, Vale View, and Tracy Lane. Prospect Street was left over. We had punchless items from last year, so it was 1.7 miles altogether. General capital appropriations of 1.3 million. And we are about 90% complete with that appropriation at present. And the Seffeli contract is in punchless phase. Going on to a couple of photographs of work for the reconstruction program, you can see there's drainage work, there is curving work, there is a number of road reparations that happen. Sometimes the subbase gets reconstructed in areas where the road is not leveled. And you have Gibbons Place here, Park Lane, as an example. Running on to other components of reconstruction work, there is base repair, curb installation. There is base repair oftentimes in the roads, again, new curb installation, and then the final mill, tack, and overlay process. These examples are up on Britton Street. Here's a very good photograph that Frank had taken out in the field. It's a before and after. So with the reconstruction program, particularly up on Park Lane, you can see a night and day difference in the road. So it's a really nice transformation of Park Lane. Didn't get a whole lot of negative comments from residents in that area. In fact, all summer, it's been, it's been pretty positive. And having Frank out in the field on a regular basis has helped a lot. As far as traffic safety and traffic signals are concerned, we have five, again, photographs here of additional work that was done in terms of heads and visors, LED fixtures, new lenses, back plates, and camera actuators. All that work was done at Green Village Road and Kings Road, and going counterclockwise, Lewanica and Woodland, Sampson Kings Road, Green Woodland Road, and Park Ave and Ridge Dale Ave. The county project was, again, up at Lewanica and Woodland. The county, the interesting thing about having Gen Electric out there on the, on the maintenance and update work at the traffic signals is that each one of those projects cost us between 15,000 and 20,000. When you completely replace the signal, like they did up at Lewanica and Woodland for the county, that was a $350,000 contract, of which the town paid about $85,000 into. So a much more significant capital obligation for replacing the entire signal instead of just maintaining parts of it. As far as the sidewalk replacement program was concerned, we've been busy on that for a number of years. This year, Seffeli, through a number of change orders, got a whole bunch of additional sidewalk work from us on their general construction contract. It was very convenient. They will continue to be working for the next two or three weeks on sidewalks in town. But they have completed all the reconstruction work and all the paving work for the roads in Madison this summer. The most obvious here is right out in front of Hartley Dodge Memorial, and so we've got a couple of good pictures there for you of the sidewalks being replaced and conduits and lighting stanchions being installed in preparation for the new historic lanterns up on Kings Road. It's going to be a very nice improvement when it's all finished. Frank Russo came to you and talked to you about a pavement management plan last year, where each individual road surface was evaluated individually. Looking at a recap on that information, this year, we have managed to, again, improve the quality of the asphalt throughout town. Obviously, with a rough winter, things can swing back in the, in the opposite direction, and we're, and we're back milling and overlaying as fast as we possibly can. But again, for a number of years in a row now, the overall surface quality of Madison's roads has been on the increase. And that obviously reflects to your investment in that asset. Other 2017 capital projects that we've been involved in this year, North Street Pump Station, obviously a very big one, sanitary sewer evaluations also, going throughout town and gammering a lot of the underground and getting condition assessment done on all those. The soil remediation project in the back of Hartley Dodge, we have a couple of pictures of moving forward in the presentation. The MRC bleachers, obviously a very fun project for us to accomplish. Water main replacements, Well D, we did a redevelopment project on that very early in the year. We have design contracts going on for additional water well work at Wells A and B and the treatment plant that serves both of those wells. Central Avenue Water Main will be, is actually in bid phase right now. Elmo Street Storm and Sanitary Sewer is also in bid phase. Here's a good picture of REVAX Company, who won a contract for us for water main replacement. As you can see, a fair amount of underground work gets accomplished. 2,000 feet of water mains so far this summer, and 100 services replaced. As far as Well D is concerned, you can see the, the most interesting photo there is on the lower right-hand corner, where you see the before and after photo of the inside of the well casing before they, they cleaned it out and reworked the well so that it is more productive. North Street Pump Station, a very big and a very long wait for improvements there. We've replaced all three pumps. They are currently working in full automatic mode, so the pump station requires no bypass pumping any longer. That big orange tank in the front there, which redirects the sewage, is now gone. And North Street is well on its way to having an upgrade that we've been talking about for, certainly longer than I've been here. So it's really nice to see it happen. That's a $700,000 contract currently with Rapid Pump. Sewer evaluations are ongoing with National Water Main. We've done that all year. Approximately 20 miles or 40% of the town has been completed at this stage. And we will continue that for a year and finally put a tremendous program together which specifically targets areas in which we can either line or grout or do root control throughout the borough. And that'll be a huge win for the underground sanitary sewers. Hartley Dodge Remediation, you've all had to work, work our parking spaces around the work in the back of Hartley Dodge. And so there's a few pictures from my drone outside, out of my, my window in the back of the building here. And the Enterprise Network Resolutions Contracting had a relatively affordable contract with us to get that underground storage tank remediation work done. They bid a good 40 or $50,000 under the next lowest contractor. And so even though we waited a little bit longer to get the work done, they did get it done in a reasonable timeframe and certainly at a reasonable cost. And the most fun that we had with any project this summer was the MRC bleachers. And everybody had fun with, with, it was seconds when we cut the ribbon over there before it started getting used. And so I know that those bleachers and the press box are appreciated by the public and those that use the MRC for rec sports and the football team. And I know that Mr. Cody's happy to get rid of the old press box that was out there, so. All good things. All good things. That Nickerson contract was relatively painless to accomplish, and it was also done through a Middlesex Regional Cooperative Contracting Process. So it was relatively easy to administer and implement and finish up, and the contractor Nickerson did a great one. So I was happy to accomplish that. 2018, looks like we have another dozen roads that we want to accomplish. As far as capital planning is concerned for next year, we need to take a close look at how and when we're going to get the Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza completed. Well A and B Treatment is under design now. There's another 2,000 feet of water main that is up for replacement. Sewer improvements will continue, as I stated previously. There is currently a TBW master plan underway, which will help the police get their firing range up to snuff and get storage containers, put in place some additional storage buildings, and well-in permits have to be done for that plan as well. So that's a good project for us for later on this year and this winter. And as far as parks are concerned for next year, Summer Hill Park is likely to have a trails program implemented. Vitali Field is likely to have renovation done on the baseball diamonds. And the library has a plan for ceilings, lighting, and roofing for next year. And so while they're working on a master plan now, it may be with some additional funding from the state, we may be able to get some significant work done in the library next year. And that is our recap of 2017 to date, our preview of 2018, and our continuing pledge to do some capital planning for the fall and get ourselves teed up for another good year next year.
Very impressive body of work, thank you. So we'll have a, I assume we'll have a copy of PDF version of this for RoseNet so the public can see that. Any questions or comments from the council for Bob? Pat, and then Maureen?
So two things real fast. One, you did a great job of burning through this, I think you only had one slide over a minute.
Tried.
And two, I really appreciate you fixing the traffic light at the corner of Park at Ridgedale.
Doesn't it turn over much quicker now?
It's wonderful. Not sitting there at 11 o'clock at night.
I wish I'd known the pattern was different, it's like a little surprised, no right arrow all of a sudden.
I once sent Bob a video while I sat there for 25 seconds while no cars came in the other direction waiting for the light that you.
You were very patient, Pat, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Maureen?
What yields were resurfaced?
The ice skating rink over at Milburn.
Oh, the reseating.
Yeah, that's twice now.
Yeah, I thought we didn't have to pay for the second reseating.
Out of the balance of the prior contract.
Ah, okay.
We did it, right.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Bob.
You're welcome.
And please pass on to your whole crew, thanks for everything, it was quite a busy summer. And now on to 2017 Best Practices Inventory.
Thank you, Mayor. The State's Fiscal Year 2018 Appropriations Act requires each municipality to submit a best practices inventory. Failure to do so or failure to attain a certain score can result in a reduction in the municipality's state aid. The inventory encourages municipalities to embrace practices that promote financial accountability, sound management, and transparency. Discussion of best practices checklist at a council meeting in open session is required. The borough this year scored 23 out of 25, there were 25 questions, that's 92%. That means the borough will receive 100% of the state aid, provided this held, this discussion is being held in public session, which it is, so I appreciate that. Some examples for the public, and we will post this on RoseNet, are best, the actual, all the questions that were asked and our responses to them, some examples of some of the questions. Question number one, New Jersey statutes requires that public employers, including municipalities, file all public, file with the Public Employment Relations Commission a copy of all contracts negotiated with public employee representatives, like the collective bargaining. So when we execute the agreement that we just signed with the police and fire, we will submit that. We currently have all of our union contracts submitted with them, so that we're able to answer yes to that. Another question is, does the municipality have an established written policy that the tax assessor shall notify the chief financial officer and the governing body of all tax appeals upon filing? No later than June 1st of each year, we have a policy established with that. Just at the last meeting on August 14th, we had a short discussion on authorities. The Borough of Madison deals with two authorities, the Madison Housing Authority and the New Jersey Public Power Authority, and the best practices checklist mandates that we have an annual discussion on those authorities to make sure that they're being run properly and to be able to answer any of your questions and be able to give the public an answer to hear about the finances of those departments or other authorities. Another question states that, did the town as per state statute introduce the annual budget and incorporate the user-friendly budget section, and they do it in a timely fashion? Yes, we did. Mentioned earlier this evening in Executive Chapter 78 is a requirement that municipal employees pay a certain amount of their health benefit contributions. And one question confirms, is your municipality paying the appropriate amount? And we are. And the list goes on. And I'm not going to bore you with it, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have with the best practices checklist. I want to thank Administrator Cody and Linda Sawyer in particular for helping me compile all this information.
Any questions or comments for Jim?
Well, one question, how come we didn't do 100%?
So.
Good question.
There are two questions, one we never answer 100% on, and we talk about this every year during the audit. About 75% of the towns get an audit comment regarding segregation of duties. Anyone who's sat here through the audit comments has heard of that before. And segregation of duties requires that there be certain functions that are segregated, and one of them would require a central cashier for the Borough of Madison. Problem is, we have multiple offices that collect fees, whether it's a fee for a parking permit over in the police department, or a marriage license over in the health department, or upstairs in the construction filing a fee. So to have one location, say downstairs in here in Hartley Dodge, where you take your ticket after obtaining your construction permit and come down here and pay it, and then pay it, get the receipt stamped, and turn around and walk back upstairs, or worse yet, go to the police department, come back here, pay, go back to the police department, it's just not feasible, given the layout of the borough. 75% of municipalities struggle with that and therefore get a comment about segregation of duties in the audits, that's the main one.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jim, and thank you for great grade there. Ordinances for hearing, will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for hearing, was introduced by title and passed on a first reading at a regular meeting of the council on Monday, August 14, 2017. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting seen.
Just a quick comment before I call the first one up, so I don't have to repeat this for every hearing, that when the hearing is open, public may comment, and same rules are in place, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 33, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $50,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of body cameras for the police department officers.
I open the hearing, anyone wishing to speak, step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 33-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitali?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 33-2017 adopted and finally passed, I ask the clerk to publish notice there in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 34, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $65,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the police firing range improvements.
I open the hearing, anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 34-2017.
My second motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitali?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 34-2017 adopted and finally passed, I ask the clerk to publish notice there of the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 35, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 195 of the Borough Code Land Development Ordinance Regarding Changes in Building Occupancy and Use.
Just a quick comment before open hearing, the email that was, that came in earlier today or yesterday, we will, during council discussion, cover that, but certainly any other questions that may come up during the hearing will cover during the council discussion. So with that, anyone wishing to comment on ordinance 35-2017, please step forward. Kathy, come on up, please.
Kathy Daly, West End Avenue. I know that you're going to be having a discussion, but I just wanted to let the public know that I did, I did ask several very specific questions, and I have had many responses back. Mr. Burnett and I have been corresponding throughout today, but the questions I had were very specific. So far, the answers that I see coming back are very general, so I'm hoping that the public hits some specific answers and that, you know, I get some specific answers to the very directed questions that I asked, so that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this ordinance?
Hi, my name is Ron Hendrickson. I shared some of Kathy's questions, so.
Address?
119 Green Avenue. I share many of Kathy's questions, so I look forward to the discussion that's going to follow. I read this very carefully, and, let me see if I can pull it up here. As I look at the original, the original language, the first, the first one says, "The previous use never received required site plan approval," and that's going to get eliminated. So I think some questions that we would ask is, how many, how many buildings in CB1 fall under that category that never had site plan approval? And then, you know, how many did? And the ones that maybe had site plan approval, is that kind of a fair for them? If they've already had approval, then they have to now go through another approval process. That's just one comment. The other thing is, I read it carefully, there's six points in the first, and there's only five points in the second, so I don't know if that's a typo or an omission, so perhaps you can comment on that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 35-2017.
A second.
Council discussion, our representative from Planning Board, Austria.
Sure, okay, I'm going to, I had first an introduction, but I'm going to start with the issue of site plan and the requirement of site plan, or if you've never had a request. My recollection from the 90s, which tells you how long I've been involved in this, is that a site plan was required if a building had never had a site plan because of the issue of use. It would require an intensity of use, the intensity of use would increase thereby causing infrastructure issues, pressures, parking pressures, et cetera. The problem throughout the years, as we have discovered, is that we made a blanket across the board, zone change, adversely affecting the small businesses and the small business spaces. We determined that a small space of approximately 1,500 square feet and below occupied by different uses will not adversely affect the infrastructure, will not adversely affect parking, and, but will only hurt the small business owner. Meanwhile, the small business owner will have to comply always with the parking schedule of Chapter 195. So not only did our planning board realize that today, or a couple, you know, in the past year and a half, but also Urbanomics reinforced our thought on that. Let me be clear, the large spaces, the demolition and redevelopment of sites throughout Central Business District 1 and 2 are subject to Chapter 195, the land use ordinance. Any building in our historic district is also subject to the review and the compliance of the Historic Preservation Commission and their ordinance. So now I'll go back to what I had originally wanted to, was going to start with. The changes in the land use code were recommended by the planning board, that's our job. We look at the master plan, we look at the ordinances, and when we see a need, as we did, we bring them to the council, we ask and recommend the changes. The main purpose of the changes was to streamline the zoning process for the small business owner, all the while continuing to protect our downtown desirability and character. We believe we set reasonable standards in the changes we made. We believe these changes will fill our vacant storefronts and revitalize our central business district. Small business owners in Madison are trying very hard to stay competitive. It is difficult when you have the Short Hills Mall, Livingston Mall close by. These changes are applying to most businesses with square footage less than 1,500 square feet. The benefits of these changes is to the smaller businesses wanting to locate in Madison. For example, we have very specific examples, Hilltop Bike Shop, Jamba Juice, Crowley Cupcakes and Drip, they are all examples of ones that would have benefited from this and not had to pay the enormous costs, and the impact on the infrastructure and parking structures of Madison was minimal with those. Larger sites contemplating changes will continue to be subject to our zoning ordinances, and if they're in the historic district, will fall under the Historic Preservation Commission's review. Central Business District 1 and 2 are treated separately, and you can see that, if you walk the central business districts, it's very different than the Central Business District 1. For all zoning districts, we eliminated a couple of the provisions that just were not relevant. We added a new section to define change of use or occupancy in Central Business District 1. Again, we looked at the requirements and streamlined them to help the small business owner. These are the small mom and pop businesses that are really trying to exceed where they're surrounded by Route 10 and the malls. Reasonable changes like regarding change to off-street parking pertains only to Central Business District 1, where we stated no minimum required off-street parking for permitted ground-floor, non-residential uses with public street frontage or frontage on a municipal alley or parking lot. The board noted that other towns have found this to work for them, and we found, just for instance, Chatham Summit, Milburn, we found that our small business owner really does appreciate these changes. All applicants are still required to meet the non-residential parking requirements set forth in Parking Schedules 195-35 Schedule 1. And I think I've covered basically everything in our changes, and I think they're good changes for our town.
Just to reinforce two things you said, which really came up in conversation, multiple locations, DDC, Planning Board, and elsewhere. One, as you just said, the off-street parking for permitted uses, so these are uses that have already been deemed appropriate for downtown. If it was not permitted use, the rules change for that application. And the other is, we know that not only the cost of starting a new business, but the time of getting from opening that door to really being successful, it takes a while, and to have that burden of hiring attorneys and planners and so on was very difficult for some of the examples you shared, and so by removing that, our small business owners can be, get to the finish line far faster.
Yeah, so can I ask two quick questions, because I've talked to various people as well. When I wasn't aware, or didn't see anything here that limited it to smaller spaces, how is that functioning? Because.
Well, we, we had an ordinance change a while back regarding our smaller spaces, like for instance.
Okay, but it's not, it's not specific to this one?
No, no, it's not stated in the ordinance, but I mean, clearly this, these changes are really directed towards our small business owner.
And based on what's written here, because it really only impacts businesses that are going to the first floor, this should not really impact what's happening with the movie theater and whatever potential redevelopment goes on there, because that would be a whole site, and this ordinance would not directly impact that.
It has absolutely no impact, that would. That would require full site plan approval. Any of the, the, any, any businesses is gonna have to come in here. We have to determine whether it requires any site planning, whether there's some extreme, you know, business hours. I mean, we, it's, it's stated that, you know, if there's an intensity of use, then it triggers the site plan review.
Thank you.
Ben?
Couple of comments to put what's going on here in a little different context. Talking about the small business portion, and Councilwoman Bailey touched on this, she and I spent a fair bit of time talking about Crowley Cupcakes and Hilltop Bicycles. And the reason was, in both cases, they fell in a very restrictive way under what I viewed as a kind of arcane rule about off-street parking and on-street parking, and whether in fact you constituted a restaurant. As someone who routinely engages in rather aggressive bike trips, I can tell you that bike shops routinely now offer coffee to their, to the people who come in after rides and who come in to look at bicycles. I don't think anyone goes to a bike shop to have a coffee. And yet, we were looking at that bike shop as if they were becoming a restaurant. And, and so I like to think that a lot of what this is aimed at is putting some common sense on top of regulations that have really gotten a bit aged and not, and are no longer truly appropriate. The other thing is, I've mentioned this many times, a large group of volunteers have been involved throughout the summer, starting actually last spring, and the year before that, with Urbanomics, who's done a great deal of work on our behalf. I indicated that much of what they've done would be showing up in various ways and in pieces along the way. We expect to have some rather interesting announcements prior to year end, but I just want to say that anyone who's been interested enough to go through this in great detail and send back comments, I invite you to join the committees that are behind the work that's being done here, so that you can have an impact at an earlier stage in discussion and perhaps see your ideas reflected in what you're reading. It's not to say we don't welcome public comment, obviously we wouldn't have this mechanism of obtaining such comment if we didn't, but I, but I also would like to say that a lot of work goes on here on a voluntary level, and the planning board, I think, is a premier example of that. There are other groups that are also heavily involved in ensuring that our downtown continues to prosper. And again, we're not secretive about these things, you are all welcome. Please avail yourself of the opportunity to participate directly. Thank you.
Just to reinforce one thing on your comments, Ben, is to remind people that Planning Board is not just made up of volunteers, but there's a professional team behind them that, that guide them, such as the attorney and the planner to help them make the right decisions. Thanks for pointing that out. Any other?
Can I, I'd just like to make a comment. First of all, I'd like to talk, I'd like to say thanks to Austria and the Planning Board. These things take a lot of work, and we're lucky that we have great professionals behind us. But I, I think one of the great things that, that this ordinance shows is that we are taking care of the little business owners, and that is the heart of this town, always has been and always will be. We, we don't attract the big box stores and whatever. I, I don't know what would happen if, if that did happen, but the heart of this town is the small business owner. And, you know, we, we've heard over the summer, how many times have we discussed how many stores have been vacant and whatever? And Urbanomics and the Planning Board and anybody who is interested in keeping that downtown viable is, will, will certainly, you know, have a good feeling about this particular ordinance, and I, I think it's gonna make a tremendous difference in our downtown. So I'm looking forward to seeing how this is gonna help us, and I, you know, I thank everybody's done all of this work. Appreciate it.
Lori?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Carmella had to say. I've worked for the last ten years with the Downtown Development Commission and the Chamber of Commerce, and both groups have been discussing this sort of change to the ordinance for some time. And, you know, the chamber is made up of the small businesses in Madison. It's, you know, and, and these, these are the people who have skin in the game. I mean, their, their livelihoods are on the line right now, and whatever we can do to speed up and make it more cost-effective, to open up a business in Madison, will only improve the downtown. It will only improve the, the scape of the, the landscape of the downtown. It'll, it'll affect the type of businesses that, that come in and, and open up, the diversity of businesses. And I, I, I think there are enough checks in place to make sure that it doesn't get abused.
Any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-five dash two thousand seventeen adopted and finally passed. I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance thirty-six two thousand seventeen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating one hundred ninety thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a twenty-ton truck.
I open the hearing for ordinance thirty-six. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing. Any, I'm sorry, I'm mad at myself, I sometimes do.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-six dash twenty seventeen.
I'll second that.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-six dash two thousand seventeen adopted and finally passed. I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to the second of invitations for discussion. This one is open to any topic. Again, as you step forward, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. At three minutes, I will give you a one-minute warning, though. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Clenning Berti. I live at twenty-six South Street. This is my second time coming to a council meeting to discuss the parking of DeFalco's tow truck on South Street. It's been persistent and daily since having come to this committee meeting a month ago. At this, at this moment, before coming to the meeting this evening, going to the gym and coming to the meeting, it was parked in front of my house. This is an issue that I've addressed, Ms. Vitale actually, Allison, tried to kind of address it with Ms. Vitale, Mr. Rowe. I understand that they are a contractor for the Borough of Madison, and that the reason that they're parking on our street is because one of their drivers happens to live on our street and wants to be near the vehicle should he have a call. My understanding is that if this is a contractor for this, for the Borough, then the Borough should be providing parking, municipal parking, or, or some, some, some kind of off, off-street parking for a contractor that the city, that the, that the Borough is paying for. So I'm here to ask the council and the mayor for some, 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 some response, or some resolution to this issue that has been happening now for probably about three or four months, that they've been daily parking on the street. And by the way, when they're not parking, over the weekend, they tend to park at the Kirby parking lot, which also has a couple trucks from Caruso's. I think it's Caruso's, which is a, also a contractor that parks in that lot. So that, and it then becomes a parking lot for all of the trucks and tow trucks and, and other commercial vehicles that don't park on the street, they end up parking at Kirby, which is also a quality of life and an eyesore issue for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry you had to come back.
We'll get the police on it.
Okay, so we'll follow through with the Madison Police Department. We can look at the, what we can do about overnight parking in a Borough-owned property there and other steps. Anything else that, from your work, Carmella?
It's not about overnight parking, it's.
Well, in the, in the, not, not on the street, but in the, in the parking lot, I believe that's overnight, right?
Right, overnight and weekend. So all weekend, they're parked at Kirby.
Yep.
There's a, there's a playground there, there's soccer games all Saturday and Sunday, and then there's probably three huge commercial vehicles taking up five, five parking spaces each in Kirby, at Kirby.
And so that, yeah, kind of, kind of two different approaches we need to handle those issues.
Absolutely, thank you.
And then we, we'll, we'll get, without having you to come back, which you're always welcome to do, but we'll, we'll get the answers.
It's an interesting, it's interesting to come and see our government at work, so I'm not, I'm not unhappy about having to come to council.
We'll, we'll get the answers back to you and what steps we're taking.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Kathy?
Kathy Bailey, West End Avenue. And I have to say, I feel like I'm becoming a thorn in your side, but I actually have a question for Mr. Jacoby, if I can ask. I mean, they've just passed this, this ordinance that, this group has just passed an ordinance that actually is misnumbered. So it was, I'm not sure, there was no discussion about the misnumbering, so was that a typo or was number three, bullet point number three under numbers, under letter C, was that just, is that, is there a bullet point three? Are there supposed to be six bullet points?
It goes one, Jim pointed out, it's, it goes one, two, four, five, six.
Yes.
It appears to me, we didn't, I didn't create this ordinance, it appears to me that this is a Scrivener's error. The Scrivener's error can be corrected. It looks like, if you look at number one above it in A, it talks about the previous use never received required site plan approval, then it goes two, three, four, five. It looks to me that C starts with number two, and it looks like it was just misnumbered all the way through. So we can verify that tomorrow, and if it's a Scrivener's error, that'll be corrected.
So that will, can be corrected, and then will be published with the correct numbering. Thank you.
Okay, well, aside from that, I, I appreciated all the discussion, and I understand that so much work has gone into this, but I think in the end, all of you, all of you reviewed this, and nobody picked up on some, on a small error like that. I just, it just raises the question of how closely was it really reviewed by everyone on this body that, that nobody even noticed?
No, we noticed it.
Yeah.
We saw it had been corrected.
Let's, yeah, please, we'll just let Kathy make her comments and then, thank you.
So, and, and that's, that's just the one point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to reinforce the comments of Ms. Bailey, obviously, sometimes typos and things like that will slip through, but I would speak for the volunteers in this room, and the volunteers on many committees, that they are very thorough in working through the intent and making sure the intent of the ordinance meets its goal. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Dennis?
Dennis Schreiber, nine Amelia Court. And my question is actually just a very simple one, more out of curiosity. Councilmember Bailey brought up earlier in the meeting the sell of the tax liens. And I'm just curious, and this may be a question for Mr. Cody or Mr. Burnett, what's the discount that we take, or the haircut that we take on selling the liens?
They pay a premium.
Really?
Full amount, and then it's, it's an eighteen percent. They have to pay a hundred percent of the outstanding tax lien. The tax lien holder holds the lien on the property and can charge a statutory eighteen percent interest.
Yep.
Until it's paid off. So the Borough collects the full, basically what it does is it shifts the liability from the Borough to a, a private entity or citizen.
Yep.
Who then makes these investments because of the eighteen percent return on the, on the, on the lien. And if it's not paid, then they can ultimately take action to acquire the property.
Well done, great.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction to ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinants scheduled for first reading have a hearing date set for September the twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance thirty-seven, two thousand seventeen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending, ordinance forty-nine, two thousand thirteen, regarding chapter thirty-four of the Borough Code entitled The Police Department.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-seven dash two thousand seventeen.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-eight.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the two thousand seventeen Central Avenue Water Main Replacement Project.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty seventeen.
I second that motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-nine dash two thousand seventeen.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one fifty-five of the Borough Code entitled Sewer to Clarify Sewer Connections.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty seventeen.
I second that.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Ordinance forty dash two thousand seventeen.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund to install lacrosse wall at the Madison Recreation Center.
Mayor, I move ordinance forty dash twenty seventeen.
A second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move resolutions R two-two-nine dash twenty seventeen two, resolution two forty-five, twenty seventeen, and then resolution two-five-oh dash twenty seventeen.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be polled? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Current fund, we have six million one hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents. General capital fund, two hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and five cents. Electric operating fund, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars even. Electric capital fund, fifty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars even. Water capital fund, thirty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-nine cents. The water capital fund, forty, four thousand one hundred dollars. Trusts, six hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and three dollars and four cents. Total is eight million seventy-six thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars twenty-eight cents.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
There is no new business.
Mayor, I move re-adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Back in the swing, I think. Thank you for your thoughts to this. Well, they're all good, they're all good.
I haven't, I don't have a Facebook account.